I'd like to call the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission for January 5th, 2017, to order. Can I get a roll call for members, please?
Dirk Bowden.
Here.
Alan Buckner.
Present.
Emery Dorsey.
Here.
Janet Leo.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Amanda Weaver. Donna Kimzy and Steve Tims are absent.
The next ordering on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda? I move to approve the order of the agenda today. May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the minutes for December 1st, 2016?
I move to approve the minutes.
May I get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for vote.
Motion passed, five to zero with one abstaining.
I will now open up the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. Seeing no one in the audience, we will close the public forum. And there are no public hearings, so we will move on to item number eight, other items. The small alcohol production.
Thanks for venturing out tonight, Planning Commission. My name's Lisa Ritchie. I'm a planner here with Community Development Department for the City of Wheat Ridge. First item up for discussion tonight is amendment to the zoning code to allow small-scale alcohol production facilities. We'll keep this rather informal, and we'll have certainly a lot of opportunity for questions. I'm just going to go briefly through kind of where we've landed. So first off, what we'll talk about, why is this being discussed? Kind of how did we land here as staff? What are the proposed standards? What type of framework did we end up recommending? And then give you all an opportunity to discuss and provide some feedback for us. So first of all, why are we taking a look at small-scale alcohol production? Bringing it forward tonight for a number of reasons. One being that this industry is a big driver of economic development in the state of Colorado. According to the Brewers' Association, which is an industry trade group, brewing had a $2.7 billion impact on the state of Colorado's economy in 2015. So additionally, we as staff retrieve regular inquiries from potential operators on as to whether and how this is currently allowed within the city. As such, we feel it would be of benefit to provide clarity in our zoning code on this issue, under what parameters and where within the city this type of use could be permitted. And finally, as I'm sure we all know, these uses are already here. So we are all aware of existing brew pubs, micro breweries and distilleries that exist in Wheat Ridge. Generally, we as staff review these on kind of a case-by-case basis, make a determination on a site-by-site location, whether or not it's appropriate, but we'd rather have some clarity through the zoning code. So how did we land where we are tonight? In order to get to the proposed standards, staff collaborated heavily with City Clerk's office. We're really lucky here with City of Wheat Ridge. We have Mr. Robin Eaton, who's also here in attendance tonight. He's an expert on state and local liquor laws. So he used to work for the State of Colorado with liquor licensing, and now he works in the City Clerk's office. So he's here to answer any questions that you all may have. In addition, we evaluated a lot of other communities' regulations to kind of get a sense of how other folks have approached this. Ultimately, staff has kind of modeled the approach after the City of Fort Collins. I think it's well-known that they have this industry. It's pretty well-established in their community. We reached out to their planners. It's been great for their community. They have very little issue with administering the code as it is drafted. So as well as evaluated industry standards and trade organizations to kind of get our head around how the operators approach this. So where did we land? We looked at a couple of different ways to categorize these users by impact, so that we could ensure that we were keeping these on a smaller scale. And so as such, we are recommending a production volume threshold for a couple of reasons. One, it's generally used by trade organizations to differentiate users by scale. And two, it's also the threshold by which the state and local licensing regulates the industry. So they classify them based on production volume, as well as most cities also classify them by production volume. So seemed like the best way to approach it as a user then could understand pretty quickly and easily where they slot into our zoning code. Ultimately, the thresholds that you see on the screen are where we've landed. These mirror, again, the City of Fort Collins. There's not a lot of variability in the brewing industry classifications, but what we found in our research is there's great variability in the distilling and the wine classifications. And so, again, ultimately, you can find cities that are much less restrictive than this, much more restrictive than this. And ultimately, we just, again, kind of picked Fort Collins, as it seems like it's working well for them. So again, then, if these production volumes are exceeded, we would classify the use as industrial, and they would be located in an IE or a planned development. So then, in order to establish the use, we would propose these following definitions in the zoning code. First of all, we would amend our existing definition for eating establishment to allow accessory alcohol production, which then would allow a brew pub, similar to Colorado Plus then, or another brew pub like that. As well in your packet, you'll see the specific definitions related to microbrewery, micro-distillery, micro-winery. Those are all tied to the production volumes that you saw on the previous slide. As well, we would include a definition for a taproom, which is a use associated with any of the above, which sells alcohol beverages for both on and off-premise consumption. So finally, our proposed regulations then would include those definitions tied to the production volumes in our use charts. So we would propose then to differentiate them based on whether or not they had a taproom. And in staff's opinion, a taproom obviously is going to encourage more traffic, more folks accessing the facility. It's not a wholesale facility. It's not an industrial manufacturing use only. So we would be more permissive in where facilities could be located if they included a taproom. You'll see permitted, C1, C2, and IE, and then a special use permit in our NC and RC zone districts, which would allow us to look at those on a case-by-case basis. And then on our mixed-use code, again, permitted with a taproom across the board, without a taproom, in the mixed-use commercial interstate zone districts. And we would be, you know, looking for your feedback on all of these, but specifically the zone districts here that we've attempted to take a first stab at. So with that, it's just a brief overview of everything that was provided in your packet. We just really would love some feedback from you, on if this is an idea that you all support you can get behind, as well as what your feedback and any comments or questions you may have for either myself, or Lauren, or Robin. And I'll take a seat to address your questions.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Bowden?
Sure. I guess I'll just kind of, I don't know if there are questions so much, but thank you, staff, for putting this report together and for staying in the forefront of an industry which is proliferating pretty quickly, especially over the last 10 years or so. And that number $2.7 billion impact on the state economy, that's pretty impressive. From a micro level, I think, I just want to touch on some things. When someone's looking to get into this industry, to start this business, there's two things to consider. You have to consider, there's two important factors, really. The size, you need a very large space, and you need a lot of initial capital. Anywhere from a quarter to half a million dollars is needed for the equipment alone. And you're also looking at just a very sizable space, something that accommodates fermentation process, storage facility, and then if you're adding these taproom elements, that's an extra space. So I think what you're seeing in this industry is a lot of, you know, sole proprietor, smaller businesses are not able to move into, you know, commercial areas with a lot of foot traffic. Instead, they're kind of moving to the fringes of cities, where there's, you know, lower rents, but able to accommodate those needs in those businesses. So I think the biggest thing is that when they move to those areas, they're able to kind of revitalize small communities. And that's an important thing to consider, because not only is there a positive economic impact for those businesses in terms of, you know, licensing, taxes, wages for employees, but also from a community aspect. You know, these breweries are sponsoring schools, they're holding meetings, they're holding events. And, you know, in these neighborhoods where maybe it wasn't so vibrant before, you're seeing a lot of new energy that the space next door might now look a little bit more appealing. And you're seeing, you know, breweries and, you know, extensions. I guess I'm talking more about the breweries that allow customers to come in, not just the production facilities. You're seeing them kind of be the forefront of building communities. My wife's from Kalamazoo, Michigan, and then there's probably examples locally that are similar. But when I started visiting her family seven or eight years ago, there wasn't a whole lot in her part of town. But they opened this brewery, and a couple of years later, they opened another one. And now when I go back, you know, it's not just visiting the in-laws. You're actually going to a space where there's vibrancy, there's energy. And that started from, it started from these breweries. Those were the forefronts. It wasn't a rug store or a coffee shop that energized the community. So, you know, I think, you know, leniency, like I said, and really seeing the economic and community benefit of these applicants would be something that I would embrace. As far as the alcohol and, you know, Colorado liquor code, I don't think I have a strong grasp. Maybe the smarter individuals over here to my right can better comment on that. Maybe about, maybe the potential negative impacts that that would cause in a community of our size, aligning with the Colorado liquor code. But just, those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Buckner?
Thanks for putting all this together. I think it's a really important business sector to address specifically. I know Eugene and the folks down at Colorado Plus pretty well, and the hard work that he and his partners have put in over there on 38th. And I know it's made a positive impact on the 38th Avenue corridor over there, to have that type of destination. And I know, knowing other brewers around the state and the Front Range, and homebrew enthusiasts like myself, I know that if there were more here, you'd probably see more destination-based traffic as well. So I'm glad this is coming together. I guess one question I had would be just on the distillery front, the standard of no more than 15,000 gallons a year. Would any of you have any information on what sort of capacity some of the distillers, say in Denver or across the Front Range, might currently be operating at, such as Leopold Brothers, or some of the other kind of higher-visibility, perhaps, destination-taproom-type production facilities? Just to get a sense, kind of calibrating what 15,000 gallons really means in terms of impact?
So, it's really easy to find classifications on Colorado breweries. It's not so easy to find classifications on Colorado distilleries. And I know Robin's more familiar with Leopold, so he may know. There's no real industry trade organization, and we haven't actually called facilities to figure out where they'd slot in. We certainly can provide that follow-up, should this go forward as an ordinance, though. So we have a lot of comparison on brewery sizes, but I don't have any on distilleries. Do you?
Yeah, that's the thing about distilleries. They don't really like showing how much alcohol content they actually make and produce every year. About the only way they're required to report is through excise tax. The wineries, they have to report their production volume every year, but they're the only ones that have to do it, you know, to the Liquor Enforcement Division. Distilleries and breweries are not required to do the same type of thing. So you'd have to really either pose them for it and get an estimate, or, you know, get a excise tax subpoena.
Okay.
Open public records.
Okay.
But with Leopold's, you know, I have to say, like Golden Moon and those people around here, they don't make nine, 10,000 barrels or that much. But Leopold's, I'd have to guess $60,000, $70,000, $80,000, and that's why Denver put them in an industrial zone.
I see. Okay. Well, that's good to kind of get an idea, sort of what the challenges are there in terms of measurement. The only other thing I wanted to clarify is, for some of the larger production facilities, over 15,000 barrels a year, would, say, for example, you have a big destination brewery like the Breck and Ridge. I know when the Breck moved their main production facility off of South Kalamath down to Littleton to a purpose-built facility. I know there were a lot of things surrounding that in terms of planning and development and so forth. But say you had a brewery that wanted to scale up, say we had some infill land available, and it was going to be sort of a destination, not just a production facility, not just a taproom, but perhaps a restaurant, some other associated facilities and attractions for the general public to visit as a destination. Would that be handled if we wanted to put it, say, in a non-industrial district? Would that just be handled through the, like, a planned development?
I would think that'd be the first place we would start. And I think that's similar to how Fort Collins, so like New Belgium is in a planned development, Oscar Blues and Longmont, a lot of those are in planned development, so that we can take a look at each site-specific area with that. Yeah, like a planned mixed-use, you know, to get kind of that retail component in with the industrial component. So that would likely be the way we'd go if we had a large user that had a real specific model in mind.
Okay. Yeah, because I know that with as many breweries as we have in Colorado, and with smaller breweries becoming more popular, wanting to become bigger, that's obviously a model, maybe not quite to the scope that Breck had, because they really went nuts.
Certainly. We've seen that all throughout Denver. You know, oftentimes, these folks start small, and they realize success, and they want to stay in their community. And so, yeah, I certainly think it would be to Wheat Ridge's benefit, you know, from economic development, to try and accommodate that user in some fashion at the appropriate location through a planned development, so.
Yeah, and also just from a quality-of-life standpoint for the residents, too, to have that type of amenity, to, you know, have more people coming through who, you know, are helping to create a more vibrant economy. I think that would be great. All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Dorsey?
My question is, we aren't considering adding brew pub to our list of things, like Fort Collins doesn't have brew pub, but we have brew pub here.
Sure.
So I'm just trying to get my hand, my head around, all this is licensed by the liquor, the state liquor license bureau. Why aren't we adding brew pub to our list of alloweds?
Sure. So we talked about that, and I can answer it, and Robin can expand. By amending the eating establishment definition as proposed, that would essentially allow a brew pub. But what we didn't want to do was conflict with the definitions in the state liquor code. And there is a definition for brew pub that I think is different than what our intention for a brew pub is. I think it's a lot more permissive. Is that on scale?
The casual term brew pub that we all use as customers is different than the sort of legal term of brew pub from a liquor licensing standpoint, which is why we shied away from that specific word. But we still will accommodate what we all think of as a brew pub, like Colorado Plus.
Okay. So that doesn't conflict with the state law, though. I mean, we're not conflicting with the gentleman's back there, what he's going to rule.
No, it's not. You know, the micro pub, micro brewery is what they call it technically. The state has two terms for it. One is a brewery, which is a state-only licensee, and the brew pub for a retail license, which requires a sale of food. The brewery does not require the sale of food. And that's where the eating establishment comes into the brew pub part of this.
So if I had a restaurant, and I wanted to do a brew pub, it'd be sort of automatic if I had the liquor license?
If you manufactured beer, yes.
So from a zoning code perspective, by amending our zoning code to allow accessory alcohol production for an eating establishment, essentially any restaurant within the city could do this?
If they have a liquor license.
So long as they comply with state liquor licensing.
Right. As long as they're not a tavern or a hotel restaurant, they become a brew pub. You can convert from a tavern to a brew pub license-wise, when you start manufacturing alcohol. But a tavern is not allowed to manufacture alcohol, only a brew pub or breweries. So there's a big difference. There's a legal difference between a restaurant, a tavern, and a brew pub. The restaurants and taverns do not allow manufacture of alcohol, whereas the brew pub and the new distillery pubs, just are similar to the breweries, if they manufacture spirits. Those kind of places allow alcohol production and restaurant eating facilities.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're right. We already have brew pubs. We're not trying to keep them out. We're just trying to show a little bit more definition in our codes and our laws to show that there's a difference in what they can have and do, and basically where they can have it.
So with brew pubs, they have gallon limits or barrel limits?
They do.
I mean, if it's along with a restaurant facility, you would have limits, lower limits on what you could produce, than if you had a micro brewery, let's say.
Actually, the state liquor laws for brew pubs are, they allow greater production volumes than what we would allow in our zoning code. And that, I think, was some of staff's concern why we wanted to differentiate.
I see.
Not include the definition of brew pub, so that folks didn't get that confused.
Okay.
From an operator perspective.
Well, you've halfway answered my question. I'm a little dense on that.
And I will say that, just to add on to what Emery is saying, that's one thing that always flummoxed me early on in the days of brew pubs versus micro breweries in Denver, was, you know, like, they're, you know, they basically could be the same thing, but in Denver, you know, a brew pub can only make, you know, this much beer. A micro brewery can make this much beer. And that seems to be, from a municipal level, kind of the big difference in Denver. And I think it's good not to introduce that confusion, I think, for potential developers and extra, you know, categorization, I think, into our code.
Okay.
That was our intention.
That's a question I have. Okay. Commissioner Leo?
How many applications have you gotten, say, in 2016, for something like this? And when you did on a case-by-case, and how many were not permitted?
I may take that one. So I don't know that we have a specific number for you. The challenge is, we've probably gotten, I would say, maybe a dozen inquiries in the last year or two. The challenge is when you don't have anything in your code, there's a lot of uncertainty, and there's a lot of financial risk, as we heard from Mr. Bowden. There's a lot of money that has to be invested, and people want certainty, businesses want certainty. When they, you know, when they come to us and say, "We want to open a brewery," our response to them up to now has been, "Well, put something in writing, and tell us sort of how big you are, and how many trucks you have, and where do you want to go, because nothing's in our code." People want us to be able to say, "You can look in X, Y, and Z zone districts." And then they look, and then they come back with an address and say, "Is it zoned appropriately?" And it's a yes, no. Or a special use, which adds a little bit of gray. So we've gotten a lot of inquiries, but most of the time, they haven't moved forward because there's too much uncertainty. The few that have, have been very, you know, like Colorado Plus and Ricoli have been very committed to making it work in Wheat Ridge, and we've been committed to making it work for them. So it's just, I think it's been frustrating, because I think there was an opportunity for maybe this industry to flourish a little bit more in Wheat Ridge, had we had some of the regulatory certainty that folks are looking for.
Any other questions? No?
May I ask?
Commissioner Weaver?
Okay. So, if I have a, what are we calling it? Not a micro brewery, not a brew pub.
Like a big brewery?
No. What's the word I should use? I've been trying to follow this.
Sorry. So what, tell me what to say.
Let's say, I just kind of want to work this through my head. If I wanted to brew Like, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand when other alcohol laws than licensing comes, do I have a separate license for just what I'm doing? But I, I'm thinking about Colorado Plus, right? Like, they are brewing their own at a certain amount, they also sell other brews, and they have a restaurant facility. So is that three different licenses that they have, basically?
One from the zoning would be an eating, that one, that, in that instance, that's an eating establishment under the amended definition.
Okay.
It's an eating establishment with accessory alcohol production, and eating establishments can serve liquor. As far as the other licensing, I'm going to let Robin address the liquor licensing.
With a state-issued brewery license for malt liquor, they're only allowed to sell and serve the alcohol that they themselves manufacture.
So that's like Ricoli?
Ricoli's.
But they can't serve food?
They can.
Oh, they can? Okay.
There's nothing that prohibits them against selling food.
They just don't happen to, or they didn't?
It's a different food license, you got to have health certificates and.
Okay.
All that rest of that stuff. Now, with a Brew Pub like Colorado Plus, they're allowed to sell their, their malt liquor and everybody else's spirits and wines and beers. But just like with Ricoli's, they're allowed to sell off-premise consumption, but for Colorado Plus, the only thing that it can sell for off-premise consumption, like Growlers.
Yeah.
Is their own manufactured alcohol.
Okay.
So they can't sell, they can't sell Coors Light or anything like that out the door.
Okay. All right, thank you for explaining it. And the only thing I just wanted to add, and I don't know if this changes anything that we've talked about, is just the fact that what, what I'm seeing, at least on the farming side of things, is that there are a lot of farms outside of city limits that are doing these kinds of things, but it's falling under, I think, a little bit different because they're pulling an agriculture, like I was at a cidery, I guess that's what it's called. Do we have to have an inclusive term for cider as well? Or is that, that's not malt?
It's vinous.
Oh, it's like wine?
It's considered wine through the.
Interesting.
A F and E, the Trade Tax Bureau of the federal government.
Huh.
It's considered wine.
Huh.
That's why you can't get hard cider on a brewery's license premise, because they're two separate licenses.
Just adding in the agricultural aspects, since, since we do that out here in Wheat Ridge as well, and there might be people who, you know, like somebody you know that might want to add the agricultural factor into that kind of thing.
We certainly would be interested in hearing Planning Commission's opinion on that. We, staff, talked about it, we looked into how other communities, specifically more urban communities, handle brewing in agricultural zones, and we really couldn't identify any in the Denver metro area that had agricultural zoning, similar to the context of Wheat Ridge's, for one, that we even have still ag zoning, and the scale that we do is pretty unusual. And then that allowed any type of alcohol production in there, certainly the counties, you know, might have provisions for that, but that's a different context. So, you know, we would be curious to hear your opinion. Staff ultimately landed on, you know, there's so much variability in our ag zoning throughout the city, that we didn't, in some particular ag, particular properties, it might be perfectly fine, but there certainly are others where, you know, it would be pretty out of character.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, so if you wanted, if you came and said you wanted to grow grapes, that's an agricultural function, we allow agricultural uses, but where you start to combine activities is where we would use a plan development, because there's sort of that variety.
So we'd just go to?
Yes.
Thinking about the, the, okay.
Yeah, those become just so customized that it's hard to craft a code, you know, a straight zone district that accommodates all those sort of unique combinations.
Understood.
Okay, thanks.
Now, one, one note here, when I was at the state, we received an application from a local shop here on 44th out by the truck stop, to become a limited winery with the ex-ex produce that they had on hand to start making wine, which they could have done by state standards, and if they're zoned correctly, they too could have become a limited winery without having ag produce grown on-site. For a limited winery, all you really have to do is buy the grape juice, and you can buy it in bulk, and you ferment it there, you don't have to have a, well, orchard or anything like that. So.
Just to add on to that, I, I guess one potential combination that I would maybe see in an agriculturally-zoned area might be, say, a, a business that does some small-scale agricultural production, maybe some, some dairy, maybe some fruit, for example, but maybe they want to add a cidery, or, you know, maybe they're having farm-to-table dinners, and they also are fermenting and, and serving some beverages as part, part of that. Where would that fall in terms of, in terms of allowed use, if, if they're introducing some fermented or distilled product on their premises as part of the other agricultural products that they offer?
I mean, agricultural zoning is, is really about creating the raw product and not manufacturing it into a secondary product, so there's not a lot of industrial or manufacturing uses permitted of sort of any, like, you can have cows, but you can't have the sort of the milk factory in an ag zoning. There's, there's some, there's not a great example, but.
So like you can't make?
We tended not to have those industrial sort of second-step uses.
So like, it's not, it's not usual for you to make cheese at the same place where you're milking the cow or the goat?
At a commercial scale, no.
Okay.
Yeah, and so those are the kinds of instances where we often will say, "Put it in writing and tell us, like, is it 10 square feet or is it 10,000 square feet?"
Sure.
And, and mostly because most of our agricultural zone districts are residential neighborhoods, and so it's the one-off property that's greater than an acre that can have more commercial activity, but it's typically still embedded in a residential neighborhood, and I think that's part of the reason that we haven't sort of commercialized the ag zoning districts.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I just have a couple of questions. So is it intuitive if somebody said they wanted to make mead, that they would know, is that based on the state codes, that it would be either, you know, the micro brewery or micro winery?
It would be considered a wine.
Okay, but they would, they would know that as they apply for the, the state license, that, you know what I'm saying, that, that term definition would fall to city, city Wheat Ridge would understand the definitions of those types of?
Yeah, we would just ask Robin if they came to the zoning department first, I think.
You know, on something like that, before, you know, I was previous, we talked about, it costs a lot of money before you start dropping signatures on pins and stuff like that in paper, you want to make sure that you know what you're producing, and the first step, and any facility, those people better talk to the feds, and, because that's where they start their actual licensing at. You know, finding a facility after that, that's non-sequential, but you want to talk to the feds, make sure you got the right product, especially when you apply for these licenses with them. It could take up to eight months to get your federal license. So sometimes they got to produce recipes and all that kind of stuff. So for a common person, mead, people, yeah, it's beer, grog, you know, whatever they drank in the old days, but for the actual producers of the alcohol, they're pretty, they're pretty versed on what they're applying for.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. I guess we open up the citizens' forum? There are no citizens.
Yeah, I'd say it's not a public hearing, so this is more just an opportunity for your discussion and feedback, so, you know, Planning Commission doesn't even really have a, you know, a means to provide us a, you know, binding response here, but we'd certainly love to hear if this is something you support moving forward, it sounds like you do, in any other comments.
Yeah, in this type of instance, you don't take a vote or make a motion, but if you have a consensus, you're welcome to offer that, so we can know what our direction is.
I would be, I don't have any objection, I'm definitely in favor.
I, I think the major, I think all of us would, would like to see this sort of clarification in the code, and think it would be a benefit to the city.
I would like to taste all the various kinds of, you know.
Field trip.
So I understand mead versus, you know.
Great, well, I think staff's next step, also, you know, I didn't mention City Council was supportive, so we'll be taking this and beginning to draft an ordinance, and you will see this again, hopefully relatively soon. So with that, I'd like to thank Robin, too.
Oh, you're welcome.
For sticking around tonight and helping us out.
And one little item there, too, is that we're also poisoned to the City Council to start a study session on the 9th to include the distillery pubs to our local city code. Distillery pubs are similar, like I said, to the Brew Pubs, except for they manufacture spirits, and we're going to put them on our city code to be within the 500-foot restrictions of the schools, just like the Brew Pubs and the other places are allowed to be, because they're so similar. But I thank you for your time, and.
Thank you.
Appreciate you letting me show up.
Okay, should we move on to our next subject?
Another presentation, a little more picture-heavy this time, this one, hopefully, hopefully some photos help. So again, my name is Lisa Ritchie, planner here with Community Development. This next item up for discussion is potential zoning ordinance amendment to expand some standards related to site grading, retaining walls, and stormwater facilities. So again, just an overview of what we'll talk about tonight, why are we talking about this, bringing it up. What current standards do we have in place? What are some goals for some improved standards? Proposed standards, then, where we've landed as staff and what we've brought to you tonight, and then again, we'd love to hear from you. So again, why are we looking at this? To date, staff, these particular type of standards have not really been a focus of staff. We've worked really hard, as you know, on the ASDM and some of our streetscape standards and our mixed-use code, and we finally feel like we have some capacity to bring this topic forward, as well as we've seen some installations, you know, in the, in the far past, but the relatively recent past as well, that if our codes had a little more teeth to them, I think we could have seen some better results, and so we'd like to kind of talk about that a little bit as well. So again, some of these images are local, you might recognize this, this is on 32nd Avenue. So again, example of a retaining wall design that currently still could be constructed in the city. The fence combination on this retaining wall would need a variance, it's too tall, but however, we have no design aesthetic standards that would prevent just this kind of unadorned concrete wall right next to a pedestrian sidewalk, right next to the street there. So clearly not a pleasant pedestrian experience or an attractive design. This image, taken from Google, so I could get the panorama, is of a development here in the city, the Lakemont, it's an industrial park here in the, the northwest quadrant of the city, and this image is taken from one of the corners of the property line, and you can see both, kind of in the right-hand and the left-hand side of the screen, the grading plan here really restricts, and doesn't, it restricts possible changes in inclusion and compatibility between adjacent properties here, as well as, you can't really do quality landscaping on slopes this steep, and it just makes any future redevelopment of this area really challenging. This is close to our TOD site, and I know this particular result will have some limiting factors then going forward in this area. This is one, and it's getting a little better over time, as the landscape kind of continues to grow out, but this is the Yukon Court Residential Development here, close on 32nd, just off Wadsworth there. You can see the stormwater facility, it's not really a complement to the surrounding development, it's located at a highly visible corner, has untreated concrete walls that aren't softened with any landscape material, they're not really aesthetically pleasing, there's no natural form to them. So those are just a few examples, I'm sure you all can think of some more, but within Chapter 26, we do have some existing provisions in our regulations for, within subdivision, landscaping, mixed-use districts, and our fences and wall regulation sections of the code. These standards provide adequate assurances that these components would be constructed in a safe manner and would meet any technical requirements that the city has, including stormwater or building codes, but they're generally silent with regard to aesthetics, integration of surrounding areas, or any other urban design considerations. So again, how did we get here? Planning staff worked really closely with Public Works, as oftentimes these two departments oversee some aspect of these components, so we work together on these a lot. Again, we evaluated some other communities' regulations, and our goals are to realize a better design, but not be really restrictive, to provide a lot of options and flexibilities for developers to kind of get the end result they need. So that's kind of where we landed. So again, some example images of some higher-quality products that we believe could be achieved with some pretty basic development standards that we could include in our code here. So again, this retaining wall in the image is attractively landscaped, it's pedestrian in scale, and it serves to enhance the surroundings of this development. Again, this is part of the same area as the previous image, you can see it's got uses of terracing, it's still pedestrian scaled. So a type of design such as this acknowledges that retaining walls are often required on sites here with grade changes, but they can serve to be attractive as well as functional. So we have a little bit larger retaining wall here, this image shows a design that's still attractive and pedestrian-friendly while accommodating a larger grade change. Use of landscaping and natural stone in a curved design provide visual interest. Next up, we have a really large grade change here, right next to a pedestrian sidewalk. It's still handled in an attractive manner, series of terraces and the use of landscaping. Another image here shows how some pedestrians could be accommodated through a large grade change in a pleasant manner, lots of landscaping, material variation in the walls to provide visual interest. So again, I'm not going to read all these, these are provided in your packet, but we do show on these next few slides the actual standards that we've landed on. Essentially, we've modeled the kind of drafting of what could be code language after the structure of the mixed-use code, which starts with a principle, where it's applied, and then what the, the standards are. So I will read the principle, though, and that's to respect the existing topography with grading designs that are sensitive to existing landforms and surrounding properties. Again, it would apply to most site development. And then you'll see the proposed standards, which, again, in your packet, we can, we can go through them more specifically later during your questions. Trying to, again, provide some flexibility here, but certainly provide some increased aesthetics. Moving on to stormwater facilities, then, this is another area of the code that we don't have any provisions related to aesthetic design. So these types of facilities are required on most development throughout the city. This image above shows a stormwater facility, it's attractively landscaped, but you can see even in this image why we're sensitive to slopes on landscaped areas. This is not even that steep of a slope, and clearly the landscaping is kind of struggling in some of these areas. This image here, sorry, this stormwater channel uses colored and patterned concrete, it's an appropriate scale and has abundant landscaping to minimize the impact of its presence here in this residential area. This stormwater channel uses rocks and wetland plantings to add interest to this development, and certainly I would think is a visual amenity. Shown in this image is a really large stormwater facility, it uses natural stone, wetland plantings in the bottom, and it does include trees at what we would consider as kind of an appropriate elevation. So trees certainly are not appropriate in the bottom of a stormwater pond, but through collaboration with Public Works, they've determined that kind of the, the five-year flood elevation, so long as trees are above that elevation, they shouldn't hamper the functionality of the stormwater facility. So finally, this last image then shows how all these elements could work together. So you see a large grade change shown in the image, there is a building in the upper-right. This grade change is provided through the use of terrace retaining walls, which are softened with trees and grass, and in the lower portion in the image is a stormwater facility that has its edges softened with a lot of trees and wetland plantings, and again, this area, designed in this manner, becomes a visual amenity to the site, as well as provides a bit of a natural habitat for birds and other wildlife in the area. So again, we have our proposed standards, I'll read the principle, "Stormwater facilities should be integrated into site development and designed to enhance the development through the use of materials and landscaping that complement the surroundings, or through innovative or low-impact development approaches." And again, we have the actual standards here if we need, need to reference them. With that, though, we'll get on to your thoughts, hear from you, if you support this idea, and what questions and feedback you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Start with Commissioner Weaver.
I support this idea. I don't have any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Leo?
No questions.
Commissioner Driscoll.
I worry, I mean, who makes the decision as far as the aesthetics? I mean, we end up with, with the developer doing. I mean, we end up with, with the developer doing a landscape architect, he comes out with a plan. All this is adding a lot of cost to something that, it's like the little property up here on Oak Street, not Oak, but just off of Wadsworth, that where they built the little houses.
The Yukon Court project?
Yeah, I mean, I noticed, you know, initially, I thought that was going to be a garage or a basement for a house or something, and it ends up being the stormwater drainage situation. I don't know what else he could have done, other than, you know, put brick there instead of concrete. I mean, it's such a small space for the depth of the water. I mean, how, who's going to come up with the, okay, we'll approve that? I mean, is it...
Certainly, well, a couple of things you raised. We recognize this will have an added cost to developers, but it's, it's a fraction of the cost in staff's opinion. I mean, the majority of the cost goes into that facility itself, you know, the, the inlets and the, the pipes and things to get it there. So this is, you know, this is a small fraction. And again, the goal is to provide some flexibility, so similar to some of our other provisions in the code. You know, while we don't have really specific design standards, we do in some manner, you know, that they need to be softened with use of rocks or landscaping. So we're giving them options. Certainly, if you feel like we need to be more specific, you know, no, you know, untreated concrete, for example. We didn't, we didn't want to make the restriction or the, the standards, I think, more cost-re prohibitive.
Right.
So it's a balance.
Yeah, and just maybe to add on to that, you know, in the case of the example that you're asking about, just doing a stamped concrete and adding cattails would have been an incremental cost, but would have been a huge visual impact to make that look less like an empty concrete basement versus, you know, something that's a little bit more naturalized.
Right.
And then, design standards are sort of by their nature somewhat subjective, but we're accustomed to that, and the goal is really to achieve, at the end of the day, when there's some question between staff and an applicant's perspective, we can either deny something that we don't think meets it, and they have appeal rights. We can approve it when we think it meets the intent. But the reason that we've created these goals specifically with that purpose statement essentially in mind is if, at the end of the day, can it, does it pass the straight-face test of trying to achieve the intent of the code? It's hard to write specific language, you know, for every possible consideration, which is why it is a little bit subjective, but we think that probably benefits us and developers.
I will, I will chime in.
A job.
I'll chime in after the other commissioners. Commissioner Mughnum?
I think this is a great, a great step forward on these, on these standards, and I support it. I'm glad you guys are looking at this. I think, to my mind, the landscaping plays, the landscaping portion of these proposed changes plays such a big role. Having that extra naturalized landscaping in there really can make a big difference to the public when they're encountering these, these facilities as they walk or bike or drive around, or indeed live right next to them or work, work, work adjacent to them. So that's, that, that's something that I think is probably one of the most important things in my mind, is, is the naturalized landscaping aspect of this.
Commissioner Moon?
When you researched other communities, do you have examples of how their design standards for retaining walls and stormwater facilities kind of compare to these proposed standards?
Um, I would say we found standards across the gamut. We found some that were way more prescriptive, as far as, you know, number of trees, or where trees could be, or types of landscaping designs, or no unadorned concrete, or only this type of stone should be used. And then we found some that were, you know, a lot more flexible, I think, like ours. I think ours certainly lands, if you look at, if you look at this on a spectrum, ours is on the more flexible side. But, you know, being that this is a new regulation for the city, you know, this gives us an opportunity to get something established and make tweaks later on if needed, but I don't know if that answers your question.
Sure, yeah, I was just kind of piggybacking off of Emery's, you know, if these are a lot more strict and everything else being an equal playing field, would a developer be deterred from, you know, following these? But it sounds like it's, it's really minute, so I support.
Yeah, and I might just add, too, they're, they're, they are very minimal compared to some communities, particularly if you think in the last 10 or so years where sustainability has really become a catchphrase. There are some communities who have embraced that and will have like an 80-page document on what is low-impact design and what is sustainability. So, you know, factors into a little bit of what the community's values are, just more wholesale than simply development, but I would say certainly, sort of the two pages we have is definitely in the light end of things.
I, as a landscape architect, I, I work on this on a daily basis, stormwater, retaining walls, grades, and so the, the start of your presentation was the grading. I would, and I also do irrigation design, and so when I'm looking at the design, I'm, I think, being in the Denver metro area, we're really kind of a high plains desert. And what I, what I don't do in my designs is I don't put heavy-water turf on slopes that are, I would say, greater than 20 to 1. I would say for the most part, the only time I usually use turf, it's not in the streetscapes, it's in an area that probably has about a 2% to maybe 5% slope. So very, very minimal, because anytime you're, with the turf areas, when you're applying the water, if you start going, you know, like a 3 to 1, a 4 to 1, the water just runs off, especially with traditional sprayheads. And so I typically do not use traditional sprayheads. I use something like an MP rotator from Hunter that has a very, very low precipitation rate. And so a lot of municipalities now are, are staying totally away from 3 to 1 slopes, and they're, they're mandating 4 to 1 slopes, which I would recommend. There absolutely should never be any slopes greater than 3 to 1. That should just be an outright reject. The gravel, rock is not going to sustain, and I think we should be very clear in that, that, that is just not going to work. There's some municipalities that I've worked with that, their code says no slopes steeper than 3 to 1. They won't allow me to, to grade it that way. They tell me that they want it to be a 3.25 to 1, because they know when it actually, the conditions get built, then it'll be a 3 to 1. And so I would say for the most part, I would try to stay more with the, the 4 to 1 slope and, and try to make some language tied in with turf, you know, that, you know, turf, you know, maybe turf can't be on any steeper than, you know, 4 to 1. And you could have shrubs on a 3 to 1 with, in regards to retaining walls. As a licensed landscape architect, I can't design walls over four feet in height. If they're over four feet in height, they have to be structurally engineered. And typically, on those retaining walls that are at four feet in height, the grades in between the walls can be 3 to 1, which is fine for shrubs, not turf. And typically, the, the minimum width on those are, I'd say, about 4 to 5 feet. And, and with the plants that I choose, what I've kind of figured out is I've figured out kind of a price per square footage, if you will, and so that the, the smaller the plant size, so say a 3-foot wide plant, the cost per square foot is much greater than it is on a 5-foot shrub. So I would, I would not want to design a retaining wall and then provide a 3-foot space and then another retaining wall. It's going to be very expensive. I would much rather have a 5-foot wide in between that area, so I could put a 5-foot ground cover shrub. And then there's also nuances with, in regards to retaining walls. I worked on several projects that, at the top of the retaining wall, because these are tall retaining walls, probably 10 feet, 20 feet in height, they have geogrid fabric in there, and that I am only able to put plants that can sustain a 12-inch root depth, which means maybe some ground-covered junipers and some ornamental grasses, and I can't do anything more than that. And that's, that's kind of, and then as far as the retaining wall material, it just kind of depends. You know, if, if it's something that's going to be in a very pedestrian-oriented towards the street, then I, I feel that yes, we need to spend more money on the aesthetics. But if it's more in the back 40, you know, maybe segmental block is okay. And then even, even looking at the, the stormwater, a lot of times, a lot of these projects, the land is at a premium. We're trying to put so many things into this, especially multifamily projects. At the end of the day, we do not have any luxury, sometimes there's no luxury of having any plants inside this retaining-walled little area. It's just concrete walls, and we have to get that volume, or the project just won't work. And, you know, so from the outside of that, I do everything I can to try to beautify it. Sometimes if there's retaining walls, if, if, as soon as you go over that 42-inch height, now we need guardrails. The one example that you showed, you know, it had a two-rail fence, that's their, you know, what they're using as their guardrails. I, I felt like they didn't have enough screening mater, vertical screening material to really screen that. You shouldn't be able to see that. I've seen an example over in, at the, I think it's the Sprouts over on 38th there, there was a, I know the firm that did it, but they, they put in a lot of native grass inside the, the detention area, and as long as that's upkept, it looks nice. But to be honest, a lot of the detention areas, they're pulling in, you know, sand, oil, garbage, and stuff like that. And I would say probably 99% of the times, when I designed detention areas, first, the number-one thing is, is you have to, the project will not pass unless it meets the BNP's. You have to get some type of vegetation on there so you don't have erosion, and usually native grass is the fastest thing. It's, you know, it's cheap, but you can get it down quick, and then you want to irrigate it. I know in several of those photos, you made some comments that it didn't look nice. My response would be probably the irrigation is not functioning in those areas. But a lot of the detention basins that I work on, they're temporarily irrigated until establishment, and that's it. And for the most part, the general public does not see those detention areas. I'm working on another project that has a drainage channel. It's a 70-foot-wide drainage channel, and it's just native grass. You can't have any vegetation in there. Urban drainage will not allow it, because they need the velocity, that you can't have any trees in there. I, I've asked them, and they said, we do not want any trees, because they want maximum amount of water flow there, they don't want any issues. And so, and I know in Fort Collins, they have code that talks about, they definitely don't want trees in the bottom of the basins, because it's maintenance issue. Sometimes you get the sedimentation, and you're going to come in with the skids deer and scrape that out, and so they need, they can't be meandering through, through trees, and then you have the tree roots. And so there's, there's a lot of issues. I'm not sure how you write the code as far as the aesthetics of the retaining walls. I, I personally feel that, you know, adding a lot of money, a lot of aesthetics to the, to the inside of detention basins is a waste of money, unless it is a very urban pedestrian scale, like the, for instance, that Sprouts project, where you're walking by it, it's in a very urban area. I feel like that does need to be prettyed up, and we need some aesthetics. But when you're talking about, you know, you have a five-acre or 12-acre project, and there's detention area, and it's kind of more in the back 40 and people aren't going to see it, I don't think that's where we should spend the money. We should spend the money more on the, maybe the fences, adding columns, you know, specifying that we need columns in the fences so many feet, or at the entries, you know, having a really nice, beautiful masonry entry versus having nice masonry inside a detention area. But I, I appreciate you coming with this information, and I'm glad I could, you know, kind of chime in. I'd like to, I definitely would like, I've, I've seen a project, I'm not going to name it, it's very close to my house, but it's a brand-new project, and I was shocked that they installed turf at probably a 3 to 1, and it's like an eight-foot-wide space. Why bother? All that's going to happen is the sprinkler's going to go on. I mean, I can't even imagine the guy trying to mow that thing. It is such a small little area. It's maybe not even eight foot, it might be five foot wide. It's like, why even bother with the turf? You know, there, there should not be any turf. It should just be, make it simple. Just put the shrubs in there, you're done. And instead now, what I'm probably going to end up seeing this summer is I'm going to see, you know, water is just flowing down the gutter, it's going to be turf, the turf's not going to do that great, because it's a steep slope, and it's just, it's just a, it's just poor planning. It's just, it's just a poor design. That's, that's what I don't want to see, and I would strongly recommend that, you know, in high-turf areas, that generally those areas are flat spaces. And not only that, areas that are really going to be used, when I used to work down in Las Vegas, which only got four inches of rain in the average year, I've seen to get an inch and a half in a bad year, that they, they put moratoriums and all turf on commercial, pretty drastic. And, and then they only allowed turf in residential in the backyard of 2,000 square feet. Now, I'm not, I'm not recommending that, I'm not mandating that, but there's some validity to, you know, putting turf where turf matters, not just turf for turf's sake. And I think it's very easy for developers, it's cheap to put turf in. It's, it's a very cheap upfront, short, short-term cost. I've done the math, there's a lot of papers out there. After, you know, about five to eight years, the cost of the irrigation to water and the fertilizing and the cutting and the maintenance, you, it goes, it, that price keeps going up, whereas if you just had shrubs, that price starts going down. I'm a very strong water conservationist, and I'd like to see less of the 3 to 1 and the 4 to 1 heavy turf. Native grass is different, and especially if it's, you know, temporarily irrigated until establishment, then you could go, you know, maybe a 4 to 1. 3 to 1's getting kind of steep. We've, I think everybody's done it, you know, with, with the native grasses, but definitely the, the high-water turf, it's just too steep, so.
Yeah, those are good, those are good notes, and so we certainly appreciate your perspective and all the professional experience you bring to that discussion. I think there's certainly things that we can include that you've, you've mentioned in there, so.
Well, I've talked quite a bit. Does anybody else have any comments?
I think you did a good job there. I, I even hoped you'd speak better. I think it's something that needs to be done. I mean, as far as the, you know, as far as site mining and all, but it's one of these things, I think he has made a lot of comment, especially with the grades and all of that, that we don't need to have grass 3, 4, 5 feet wide, where nobody's actually sees, sees it anyway. I mean, it's, unless you actually walk up to it. And then, of course, you've got the barriers, the fences, or the, whatever you wanted to call it, but that's something that needs to be, because that has to be done, right? I mean, that's the law, so, you know, I think, I mean, that's, you're opening up a big thing here that you're going to have to write a lot of regulation for, or, you know, a lot of, a lot more than what we've seen here, I think.
I think the last comment I'd like to make is, I know in one of them, it showed the retaining wall right next to the sidewalk. I think as long as the retaining wall is probably, I feel, less than three feet, I'm okay with it. But generally, as a general, I like to keep plants no greater than three feet height within that first three feet offset of the sidewalk. And the reason for that is you don't want to, you don't want to feel like it has to do with, well, we're just people feeling safe. So you don't want to have, you know, tall vertical structures, be it plants or walls, right next to the sidewalk. And so if, if the wall, typically what I would recommend in most cases would be to have a minimum of three-foot-wide landscape bed in between the retaining wall and the sidewalk. Less than three feet, I really can't plant anything more than just perennials. Three feet's kind of the minimum for like a shrub or ornamental grasses, and that, and it does kind of soften it. And so when you do soften it, then the materials could be, you know, maybe not the, the super high-end, as, as it were. But definitely, there were some pictures of some really nice retaining walls. The one that, that I wasn't very happy with was one where it showed, they looked like a double-tiered 15 to 20-foot retaining wall, and it, there's just no plants. I just felt like I'm going in kind of a, a tunnel, and I'm, and I'm sure that maybe that site was just very, very tight, and at the end of the day, that's, that's all they could do, you know, but it just, it felt a little stark. It was the one that had the, the pictures, it says grading and retaining walls. And, yeah, with the stairs. And there's not, and you, and in those situations, too, I know that you can't, you know, you can't plant trees, you know, within retaining walls. You can't, you generally, when I want to plant trees, the, the wall engineer tells me that, you know, I need to stay at least the mature canopy with, you know, the center from, from that retaining wall. But there's some options, you know, they, you know, you could put some vines to help kind of break that up, but it, they're just, they're large spaces, just like, you know, kind of break that up, but they're just, they're large spaces, just like, you know, like on a building, you know, where you want to, sometimes you want to break those planes up, and that's kind of how I see those retaining walls, is, you know, what can we do to kind of soften those and break those up? But that feels a little, it feels a little bit like a canyon, and I know sometimes there's just no avoiding it, that's just, that's just the site. And so I'm not, I'm not really sure how you can write the code to, you know, direct people to the, this is what we're looking for, but, you know, there's a lot of situations that they're just, they're not the same, you know, it's not just a black and white, they differ, so.
I think that's a good comment, too. One thing I did not mention is, ultimately, these provisions would live in our code, but I think we would, we intend to include a section in our ASDM that would include images, that would include captions, that would include a little more narrative. Again, the actual provisions would be in both, and we'd certainly bring that back to you for feedback prior to this getting adopted, so that you can actually comment on, you know, specific images and language. So our intent is for this to live in both, so folks have a little more guidance through pictures.
I think that would, I think that would definitely help.
Yeah, and as several of you have observed, it can get really complicated really quickly, and our goal is just, as Lisa mentioned, to take sort of a baby step into this area of regulation, not only because it gets complicated, but it gets harder to regulate, but at the end of the day, we have a lot of sort of larger-size development areas or potential areas of redevelopment in the city, and we have no authority right now to say no to something that is really stark. So we think this is an improvement, it may not be the silver bullet, it may not be exactly right, because this is so different from sort of the types of regulations we're accustomed to writing, but the goal is to sort of start somewhere and hopefully put our best foot forward in terms of this type of regulation.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Certainly, really appreciate all your feedback tonight. We'll be bringing this one forward soon as well. City Council, again, passed a consensus that they like this idea as well, so, see you on it soon.
If there are no other items, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You made the motion, I'll second it.
I move it.
Okay. Any discussion, call for vote?
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.